Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. I will take roll call for the members and then turn it over to our Chair. So, roll call. Patrick Carrier?
Here.
Robulis?
Here.
Scott Halsted?
Here.
We don't know if this room is going to work.
Here.
Nina St. James?
Yeah.
Liz Sanford?
Here.
Mike Walsh?
Here.
And James Ratcliffe is absent this evening. He notified us earlier. Okay.
Thank you, Shannon. Welcome, everyone. This is Inez St. James. Welcome to the Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is April 11, 2022. And Scott, if you can start us off with reading of the legal notice, I would appreciate it.
I sure can. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, April 11, 2022 at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Scott Thompson, application for special permit for expansion of home located at 125 Wood Pond Road, R20. Robert Schessinger Jr., application for special permit for accessory apartment use at 119 Copper Mine Road, R40 Zone. Pond LLC, application for change of zone from PR Zone to Special Innovation Floating Zone, SIFC, and site plan approval for multifamily apartment building at 74-76 Patterson Park Road. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is online at the link on your screen as well, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 24th day of March, 2022, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, I know St. James Chair.
Thank you. And Mike Walsh, since all the voting members are here this evening, you will not be voting unless someone needs to recuse themselves. I just wanted to go on record.
Thompson?
Thank you. All right, we have one new business item, and it's a matter from Town of Farmington. And Shannon, you're going to take over?
I will. Thank you. So again, Shannon Rutherford, Town Planner for Farmington. The Town of Farmington is proposing to construct an outdoor pavilion at the rear of Town Hall. It'll be an outdoor meeting space to about the size of, from a capacity standpoint, about the size of Town Council. The pavilion space is 1,280 square feet. It's roughly 40 by 32. The, I do the pavilions approximately 18 feet to the peak and 14 feet to the mid-height of the building. So here are some schematics that show the two, the two ends and the east side and west side. So this west side is what will be facing the existing Town Hall building, the east side, the parking lot, the north side towards the school, and then the south side towards the Town Hall. So this is, this is how it'll be oriented. So this dashed outer limit here is the pavilion itself going in where we had had a concrete patio. So, the purpose of the meeting space, so it will be a pavilion, as you saw with the elevations, it isn't closed, but there's large windows. The purpose is to provide additional meeting space for the town, which allows for additional participant distancing if needed. The space is comparable in size to the council chambers. There are large sliding windows on three sides of the building, so these are all large windows that'll slide open to allow additional participants to gather outside and still be able to participate in a meeting. The facility will have air conditioning, but will not be heated. They'll provide full use for three seasons and limited use through the winter. The space is proposed to have full audiovisual capabilities. There are no water and sewer services to the pavilion. There are no changes to parking, to traffic, or drainage patterns as a result of the product, project. And best management practices will be put in place with respect to construction and erosion control. The perimeter sidewalks will, will also be left at the perimeter. This sidewalk that comes into a rear entrance into Town Hall is having to be regraded in order to accommodate the work for the pavilion itself and a concrete patio that'll be located on the north side of the pavilion. I believe that's all I have for this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Shannon, someone is not muted, I don't think. Can you?
There's three people.
Or a few.
Okay, so if you are logged into the meeting and you're not actively participating at the moment, if you could mute your microphone, that would be really helpful because every, every little background noise gets picked up. So you'll be recorded in perpetuity.
All right, awesome. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, well, thank you, Shannon. Let's go through everyone with questions. All right, Patrick, questions for Shannon?
Yeah, so you're, it's going to be air-conditioned, but not heated. What's the reason for that?
I, they just didn't see the need to go to the expense for the, the heating of this space. So the, the air conditioning, since they, they felt it was going to be needed more for this location.
Okay, and is, and there, has there been like thought put into protecting that, the structure during the winter? Because, you know, in my experience, if there's, if it's enclosed, it doesn't have the sun. I know there's large windows, but it gets cold and often it gets colder in there than it does, or I should say it stays colder in there longer because it's enclosed. So in terms of constructing it, has, have you guys thought about that?
I don't have an answer to that, honestly. So I'm not sure if, if any consideration has been made for that.
Okay, yeah, and it's going to be, is it like a, it's just on slab or is it a foundation?
No, so there'll be, well, there is a footing. There is a footing for it, and then it's a slab. So there'll be a foundation, a foundation wall with footing and slab.
Okay, so I'm assuming they're going to put some type of good insulation underneath the slab on the interior of the building. So just something to think about.
Certainly.
Anything else, Patrick?
Uh, no.
Thank, thank you. Mike?
No, my only question was answered. Thank you.
Sure. Scott?
Yeah, no questions from me either.
Matt?
No questions. Thanks.
Sure. Liz?
My only question is, is this going to have permanent furniture? Is it just move in the folding chairs and tables when needed?
I don't believe it's going to have permanent furniture. My understanding is that it'll be utilized, it'll be a flex space and furniture and accommodations moved in and out as needed. The only permanence will be the AV. There'll be video projection on, on this wall and some of the AV equipment. And I think the tables and chairs and how the space will be used will, will flex depending upon the need of the meeting.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mike Walsh?
Uh, no questions.
Thank you. Shannon, what, what is the timing for this pavilion?
I believe they intend to have it completely constructed within the next couple of months.
Oh, okay. All right. I was thinking, of course, of our high school, but that's much further.
Yeah, I know. This is, and, and some of this has to do with some state funding and grant money that came. So there was a matching, like a 30-70 split.
Great.
So that's where this came to be.
Excellent. It sounds good. I do not have any new questions either. All right, Commissioners, if we are satisfied, I need a motion, please.
Oh yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make the motion to approve the site plan application by the Town of Farmington for construction of an outdoor meeting room pavilion at 1 Monty Drive.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, now we're going to move into our public hearing portion of the meeting. This is where the applicant presents to the commission. Commissioners have a chance to ask questions. We open it up to the public, close out the public hearing, and that's how that goes. Obviously, there's a little bit more, and Shannon will get into that. The first item that we have is an application from Robert C. Schessinger Jr. for an accessory apartment. Who do we have, Shannon?
I believe we have Biff Schessinger on the phone. Yeah, so.
Good evening. Hi, it's Biff Schessinger. I'm a landscape architect in the state of Connecticut. My original comments, I got down to a blistering 40 minutes, but on second opinion, since you've seen this so many times, I think two minutes should do it, and then you're going to hear from Evan calls from the Farmington Land Trust. The only difference really between this and the approvals that we got for special permit for the charitable philanthropic use a few months ago, it was a unanimous approval, was we had a text change that allowed an apartment under what would be Article 2, Section 1, Item B5, that allows an apartment within a charitable and philanthropic use. So now we've come back and reapplied for that. We're applying for a nine, 893 square foot apartment. The only difference in terms of site data criteria and zoning criteria is under the just original charitable, philanthropic use, we were required to have 10 spaces. We're providing 12. Under this, we're required to have nine spaces and we're providing 12. That's literally the only difference. So with that, I turn it over to Evan, if he wants to add some background on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I'm not showing up on the video. I should be, but it's just not working. We were planning on putting an apartment in this building from the start, and we got caught up in sort of regulatory bollocks up for no real reason, but we had to come in front of you and get the text change, even though there are many instances of nonprofits having residential use on their property, including Hillstead and the Historical Society, et cetera. So we're in front of you to kind of re-add the apartment building, which we had planned into the site plan from the start. It wouldn't have made any difference had, if you turn us down, the site plan will still hold and was approved, et cetera. So the reason why we want an apartment in our building is to have a presence on the premises, which helps us with security, et cetera. It gives us income to help maintain that building, and we can't really use the upstairs for offices because of land, lack of handicap accessibility. So it kind of fits a, a bunch of uses here. It does provide tax income for the town because that portion of the building will become taxable, so it helps the town. And from your standpoint, it's really consistent with its underlying zoning, which is as a residential neighborhood. So it kind of, we came to you and said we want a nonprofit use here, which was fine. You gave us that. Now we want to add back in a residential use and, and that will make it feel more residential. It will look residential except for the parking lot. And we hope to, to keep it very much a part of that residential community. And as Biff said, the site plan is in conformance with all of the regulations, whether we put this residential use in or not. That's my presentation, and we could go on about this, but really ask any questions you would like. But I think you've seen this before and, and really kind of understand what we're trying to do out there. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, Commissioners, let's run through questions. Patrick?
Uh, yeah, so let's say there is no apartment approved above. Does that change the, the look of the outside, or does it remain the same?
It really wouldn't. It would stay the same, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it's, so it's basically just up there, and if you, if there's no apartment, there's nothing up there, storage possibly.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike, Robulis?
Uh, I don't have any questions. I think this was, uh, yeah, I have no issues, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
I have no questions either. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
No, no questions for me. Thanks.
Liz?
No questions. One, though, could you just put the cursor over where it would be located on the site plan?
And the two front, and the two, there we go, yeah, this, that's it.
Okay, so it's going to be on the second floor, correct? Okay, all right, no other questions.
Thanks, Liz. And Mike?
No questions.
Thank you. I do not have any questions either. I'm very excited to see this building come to life, and it's going to be wonderful seeing little people visit it, and I know that's the intention. But I have no questions about the apartment. It makes sense. Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Shannon, do we have anyone that's, that would like to speak regarding this project this evening?
So I'll ask, so anyone that's called into the meeting, if you are interested in speaking or have questions or comments regarding this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. So one more time, anyone that has called in regarding this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, Commissioners, any last minute questions? We're good? Okay, awesome. All right, so the public hearing portion of, for this application is closed.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. So I need, if we're comfortable, I need a motion, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make the motion to approve the application by Robert C. Schessinger for special permit for accessory apartment use at 119 Copper Mine Road in an R40 Zone.
Thank you. And second?
Scott Halsted, I second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It was pretty unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an application from Scott Thompson. It's for addition or expansion of an existing home. And who do we have?
I believe we have Mr. Thompson on the phone.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Could just explain to the, so Mr. Thompson, I have your, your site plan. I also have your building plans that you had submitted. So if you could take a moment and just explain to the commission what you're proposing to do, and I'm, I'm happy to scroll through the plans for you.
Sure. Just looking at the site plan there. So yeah, we're, we plan to demolish the existing garage and then rebuild it, expanding it basically in all directions. And then in addition to that, put a, a bedroom above that garage, and also in between the main house and the garage, there's a, there's a little is where our existing kitchen is, the second floor of that. We're going to raise that up and create a second floor space for washer and dryer room on that space. And that's basically it.
Okay. Do we need to, Commissioners, you saw the notes from Shannon about the size. Hopefully, hopefully everyone saw, had a chance to review all the documentation. All right, let's run through questions, please. Patrick?
Um, you know, I didn't see an aerial, like what is, what are the homes? I see, I see what you have here in the, in the review, and it looks like there's a mix of, of different sizes there, 4100 square feet, and then I see one at 19 and so on. Yeah, so if I can see an aerial, I really don't have a question at this point, just to see the aerial, to see how it looks.
Yes.
So it's across the street, okay?
I guess I think so. I'm assuming everyone can see that, the aerial's up. Okay, I'm getting head nods.
Yep.
So, and then in the summary I provided, it had the street address and some of the adjacent homes. So I provided the total of what the expansion will, will give us for this, this proposal and how that compares to the homes in the vicinity.
Okay, yeah, no further questions. Thank you, Shannon.
Thanks, Patrick. Mike?
The agenda review answered all my questions, and it's like it fits in well with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I agree. It seems like it fits size-wise with the neighborhood. I don't have any questions either.
All right. Matt?
No questions for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Liz?
No, I don't have any questions either.
Okay, and Mike?
No questions.
All right. We are moving so quickly today. I don't have any questions either. I drove by, I drive by this street often, and it looks like it will fit the character of the neighborhood. I agree with that also. Any correspondence back from the mailing?
No, we did not receive any written correspondence.
Okay, mailing was done, right? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can check.
Yeah, if you can check if anyone called in.
So again, if anyone called in via Zoom to ask questions or make comments regarding this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. One more time, if anyone's called in regarding the application for 125 Wood Pond Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission.
Okay.
Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
All right, Commissioners, any last minute questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay, we're good. All right, so the public hearing is now officially closed. No other questions from the Commissioners. I need a motion, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I, I would like to make the motion to approve the application by Scott Thompson for special permit for expansion of home located at 125 Wood Pond Road in an R20 Zone.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so it's unanimous. You're approved, Mr. Thompson, for the expansion, and you will work with town staff going forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, the last public hearing in front of us this evening is an application from Pond LLC, and I'm sure we'll have several people.
We do, I believe. Attorney Hollister, are you starting us off this evening?
I am.
Okay, it's your show, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Nice to see you virtually. I hope someday I can actually speak to you in person, but anyway, it's, it's nice to see you all. And I think, as an aside, I think you know I have been working very closely with Attorney D. Crescenzo on the 402 Farmington Avenue Appeals, and that, that's proceeding along. Tonight, representing the applicant, which is known as Pond LLC, an affiliate of a company called Sovereign Partners in New York City, represented by Bill Gentile, one of the managing partners of that organization, and he will speak after I do. Our consulting engineer is Tom Daley from SLR Consulting in Cheshire. Traffic engineer is Emily Foster from SLR Consulting. My client, Ryan Hoiler, from Hinckley Allen &amp; Snyder, is with me tonight. Our architect is Ron Cooper from Swiegels &amp; Partners in New Haven. Just by way of background, sort of my, my Farmington credentials, I think a lot of you know, but I, I worked with Metro Realty with this commission and town staff on the Yukon Medical Center, the medical office campus, what is now Section 28 of your regulations back in 2010. Worked on several site plans for medical office buildings along, mostly along Farmington Avenue. Since then, I worked on the Special Innovation Floating Zone in 2018 and 2020. And then last year, of course, I've worked with, with all of you on 402 Farmington Avenue. As always, thank you to the town staff, Shannon, Bruce, Sandra, and Rose for their logistical help in getting us to tonight. Just to touch, touch the base of procedural compliance, the rezoning map was filed with the town clerk on April 1. We've reviewed the notices. They were published correctly and timely. Hearing notice was sent via certified mail last week to, or two weeks ago now, to the 200-foot butters. Green cards were provided to staff. Sign was posted more than seven days and photo submitted to staff, and the slides that we're going to use tonight were submitted to Shannon last week and are part of the record. I'm going to venture that our presentation tonight is about 60 minutes. And the application materials, you should have the bound package that was, that is dated February 22, and then the supplemental materials that were submitted online, mostly procedural matters, except for Item 3, which is what I call a compliance review, which I'll talk about shortly. And then we, then we have the, the revised, there were slight revisions to the traffic report that were submitted on March 24. So by way of background, the Special Innovation Floating Zone, as I mentioned, in 2010, the Medical Office Campus Zone was drafted and adopted. And, and the purpose of that was to create rules for properties around the Yukon Medical Center dealing with traffic and pedestrian circulation, parking, sidewalks, signage, lighting, landscaping. And I think the success of that zone is witnessed in the fact that there have been quite a number of rezonings to Medical Office Campus since then, many, many along Farmington Avenue. By 2014, I think it's fair to say the medical office, care, biotechnology, research, all of those uses were well-established around the, the hospital itself, leading to the question of what does the medical office community need to solidify its success? And this commission quite appropriately asked the same question. That led in 2015 to the commission receiving what was called the Yukon Health Center Neighborhood Planning Study, which, among other specific recommendations, recommended a creation of so-called live-work-play areas. In other words, not just medical office, but mixed use, including multifamily residential. So in 2017 and 2018, I believe Mr. DeVoe was the town planner at the time, the POCD supplement adopted this recommendation with a specific focus on, quote, "a supply of modern, high-tech, efficient, small rental apartments," unquote, and to do so through the floating zone mechanism. So the, the original floating zone, Special Innovation Floating Zone, was drafted and adopted in 2018 as a, what we called at the time, a broad strokes regulation. And then in June of 2020, we worked with you, at that time I was working for Metro Realty, on refining and clarifying the standards. And then in November of 2020, 402 Farmington became the first Special Innovation Floating Zone application in the northwest corner of the, of the zone, and of course, that was approved in mid-2021 and is now on appeal. So this application is the second Special Innovation Floating Zone. But interestingly, and as we'll talk about this in several different ways, it's the, at the opposite end of the zone, in the so-called corporate area east of Interstate 84 and in a, within a corridor of a a variety of corporate office type of uses. So the application, Shannon, if we could maybe move to slides, uh, two, three, four, five is, as I'm going through this. So here's the property, you can see eighty Interstate eighty four on the left. And you can see the two existing office buildings and what is known as the Pondview Corporate Center uh, in the center of the property and the, uh, I don't know, we, we've debated, is this a T or a J or something else? But anyway, the, the, uh, the, the, the dark brown is the configuration of the proposed building and the amenities. And the overall property is thirty four acres zoned, uh, PR. And one of the, one of the important planning features here is the site where the, uh, the apartments are proposed was the site of a proposed third building to complement the two that are shown. That building was approved in nineteen eighty seven. The developer at the time was Fusco. Uh, but that, uh, that building, the third building was never built. So the proposal here is to build the, the apartments on the site of the approved, uh, third building. And one is sort of important architectural feature of the site is that the apartments are not only separated by that traffic circle, which you can see, uh, in the middle of the slide, but uh, that, that, uh, traffic circle is actually sort of a high point. So there's actually a pretty good physical sort of on the ground separation between the office buildings to the south uh, and the proposed apartment site to the north. So, uh, if you could go to the next slide, Shannon, please, uh, thank you. Um, there are, uh, the proposal is two hundred and four rental units in one building, uh, four stories, which we'll come back to, uh, east of eighty four and to the north, uh, across the former, uh, road known as Wolf Pit Road is Camp Current and that you saw on the previous slide uh, to the, uh, east, southeast is, uh, uh, Patterson Park. We have before you, uh, one application, which, uh, I would, I would say is in three parts, the rezoning of the thirty four acres from PR to special innovation floating zone, site plan approval. And as you recall, from, uh, four oh two Farmington, the fact that this is four stories needs a five, six, uh, specific, uh, approval. Process to date is we had a, uh, pre-application meeting with staff in January of this year. Uh, Tom Daley, uh, led the, uh, application for the wetlands permit, which after two meetings was granted on February second, and that is tab eleven of our February twenty second application materials. And then we were in front of the Economic Development Commission on March ninth and received a positive referral letter from them. And that positive letter is, uh, tab four of the supplemental materials that were submitted last week. Sewer and water have been confirmed, uh, by staff, uh, through staff, uh, that's tab twenty one of the application. Uh, collateral permits necessary for this are, uh, State Traffic Commissioner, uh, the Office of State Traffic Administration, showing my age here. Um, uh, an O S T permit, but notably this site is, uh, goes back in time, uh, long enough that it already has a stra- uh, major traffic generator certificate from the state, going back to the development of the two office buildings in the late eighties and the early nineties. So that, uh, certificate will essentially be updated. Um, we will, of course, need a, um, a D E P stormwater general permit. The, uh, natural diversity database has been checked and there are no endangered species. Uh, we're also, uh, very proud of the fact that there are some, uh, green and sustainable features which are explained in a narrative in tab eighteen of the application materials and our architect, Mr. Cooper, will, uh, will talk about those, uh, briefly in his remarks. Um, the density calculation, you recall that the, uh, the special innovation floating zone has a, uh, sort of a hybrid calculation. The density is reduced if the site borders residential, which this does, even though there's not actually residential, that it's a residential zone. But even under that calculation, we are compliant with the maximum density. And then Shannon, if you could just go to, uh, slides four and five, just to show you other perspectives. So this, this shows how the building drops in on the site and this is the, uh, one of the elevations which, uh, Mr. Cooper will explain. So at this point, I, I want to turn it over briefly to, uh, Mr. Gentile, our client of Sovereign Partners, to just give you a brief introduction to his company and their portfolio. Uh, Bill, go ahead.
Uh, thanks so much, Tim, and I apologize. I'm actually getting over COVID, so I'm lucky that this is a Zoom meeting, so my voice, if it's cracking, is a uh, quick recovery. So, uh, uh, thanks everyone for their time tonight. I really appreciate it. Um, yeah, Sovereign Partners is a third generation, uh, family-run real estate investment firm. Uh, been around for, uh, for quite some time, since, since two thousand and two in its current form. Um, we're super excited to, uh, you know, to, to be in this market. Um, I've done really well with the office buildings and this is a kind of logical next step for us. Um, as a company, uh, you can switch to the next, next slide, Shannon, if you want. Um, so as a company, we own around seven million square feet, uh, of real estate assets throughout the country. Um, we're, uh, a pretty hands-on owner-operator, um, so, you know, very involved in the kind of day-to-day operations at all of our assets. Um, uh, you can go to the, the next slide. Um, so this is our team. Uh, so I've been with Sovereign Partners for, for fifteen years. Um, it's, uh, our, our two primary principles, our brothers, the Sack, uh, it's the Sackeye family. Uh, well-capitalized both through their funds and, uh, you know, through a, a series of private equity vehicles that, that we've launched, um, you know, kind of over time. Um, and yeah, I wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about us, but mostly, um, you know, focus on another project that um, was recently completed. Uh, and I think, uh, you know, speaks a little bit to how, um, yeah, our perspective on mixed use looks. Uh, and that would be on the next slide. I think one more slide. Uh, one more. So, uh, this is a, a project that we're really proud of. Um, we actually, uh, owned a, a twenty-story office building, um, in Kansas City. And, uh, it was a, a fully functioning office building. We ended up with some vacancy um, and decided to convert a large portion of it into, uh, high-end luxury apartments. And I wanted to talk a little bit about this as a case study, just because it's, it's so similar to what we, um, you know, wanted to do in Connecticut, obviously. Uh, you know, not vertical, but, uh, you know, a similar concept in terms of, um, kind of the symbiotic relationship that can exist between office and residential, um, especially in, uh, you know, the COVID world that we're in today. Um, so if you go to the next slide, I think that there's s- some images. So, uh, so essentially the, the building was a three hundred thousand square foot building. We ended up converting, um, a bunch of the floors in the building to a hundred and sixteen apartments. So, um, a little bit smaller in terms of, uh, you know, size to the unit count that we're doing here, but very similar in that, um, you know, there are office tenants and residential tenants and even in, in, in closer proximity here in Kansas City. Um, a very similar, uh, very similar size units and similar amenity package and, uh, you know, high-end finishes that we're looking to do, uh, in Farmington. Uh, and we think it will, uh, you know, uh, you know, be a very, uh, similar look. And I think we have some images of what we did on the next slide, just to give everyone an idea of what kind of our finished product looks like. Um, so these are, um, you know, typical one and two-bedroom apartments, um, that we completed. Uh, modern, you know, uh, you know, nice reasonably priced apartments, um, in Kansas City. Uh, a similar amenity package can be found on the next page. Um, I don't know if we're going to do a basketball court here. I don't think that's in the cards, but, uh, you know, just to give an idea of kind of the, the product that we ultimately like to end up with. Um, you know, we have a ton of experience, uh, you know, both on the office and on the residential side, owning and operating, um, you know, these type of assets. And we are, uh, we couldn't be more excited, um, you know, being Farmington, trying to do this project. So thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, just to review the residential program that's proposed here, I mentioned two hundred and four total apartments, but an important feature is one hundred and fifty-two of those will be one bedroom. Two, uh, forty-four two bedrooms and eight three bedrooms. Unit size, uh, uh, one bedroom, seven fifty, seven, seven hundred fifty square feet, uh, two bedrooms, a thousand fifty and three bedrooms, thirteen hundred. The approximate rent ranges will be for the one bedrooms, fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred dollars per month. So, uh, two bedrooms, seventeen hundred to nineteen hundred and three bedrooms, twenty one hundred to twenty three hundred. The expected resident demographics will be, uh, millennials, young professionals and empty nesters. But of course, the overlay to that is the, the market here is primarily focused on the employees of the, uh, the medical, uh, center. Um, the, as Shannon has mentioned in the agenda overview, the parking here ratio, the, the ratio is in normal ranges, but the, I guess you'd say the procedure is a little bit different. Um, two hundred and fifty-six total parking spaces, which is of based on one space per one bedroom and two spaces per each two, uh, and three bedroom. What you'll notice is that the special innovation floating zone, uh, requires one point five spaces per unit. But that was superseded by state law, uh, a change in state law last year, which said that zoning regulations cannot require more than one space for a one bedroom or two spaces for a two-bedroom or larger. With an opt-out provision, Farmington, and I, by the way, I give you credit for, uh, choosing this path, Farmington has not opted out, uh, from that ratio as the state law allows. So we are consistent with this, the ratio that has been adopted in state law. All of that said, I would point out that the ratio does not rely on any shared parking with the office. Uh, but I think one of the realities is that the Pondview Corporate Center at this time has, uh, just plenty of parking. There's never been, uh, never been a shortage in, in any of the recent operations. Now, why, why is this property, why do we believe this is suitable for multifamily? And there's a, there are a couple of reasons for that. The first is it's a unique location east of Interstate eighty four. Uh, in what the special innovation floating zone calls the corporate center area. You may recall that when, when we were looking at four oh two Farmington, um, this area was, was spotlighted as a potential future, uh, complimentary area to um, four oh two, which would be in the north or the upper left-hand corner, uh, of this, uh, of this map. So it is in a, in a corporate area and that, but all, all of the features that I've described so far make it consistent with the, um, with the twenty eighteen plan of conservation and development. In addition, if you were to focus just on the, uh, the red box in the lower left-hand side of the screen, that is, as you well know, uh, uh, well, uh, established and busy corporate corridor. So in that sense, the property and it's, uh, it's basically the pink shaded property in the right, right, yeah, right there. Um, it is, uh, it's in a corporate office, uh, corridor. And, uh, and there are plenty of, uh, jobs that are within, uh, walking distance of the, I'm not going to say that it's walking distance to the hospital. Uh, we can talk about that later, but it is, uh, certainly within walking distance to, uh, a, uh, a good-sized number of, uh, uh, corporate environments. Now, one of the other, uh, really important features of this, uh, site, and I'll introduce the topic and Tom Daley will, uh, take it in a little more detail is this site is barely visible, uh, because it's behind the office buildings. It's at a lower elevation. There is the mature tree buffer, uh, around Camp Current to the north and, uh, on the edge of, uh, Patterson Park, uh, to the, uh, east and southeast. And this was demonstrated, uh, with staff, uh, present by, via a so-called balloon test. Um, I know those of you who, who are at far four oh two Farmington recall the machinations we went through on the balloon test on that site, but this, this was done, uh, and, um, the, we measured the forty-five-foot building height. Uh, there were balloons that went up to seventy-five feet for reference. And basically the, the confirmation is that this site, uh, even it, it built as the, at the proposed four stories just isn't visible. It's not visible from the East Farms neighborhood. It's barely visible from, uh, Interstate eighty four. And, uh, it's tucked away, uh, in a, uh, in a very convenient corner. Um, another thing I'll mention is you, you may know that, uh, there is a renovation planned for Patterson Park proper, which is owned by the city of Hartford. Uh, we tried to get some more recent details that we're not able to do so, but we do know that as of last year, there was an R F P put out by the city, uh, to, uh, for bidding to conduct the renovations. And the last thing I'll mention about why this site is suitable, uh, Shannon, if you could go to the next slide. Uh, this, uh, site is on two bus routes. And this is kind of hard to see, but the, uh, uh, there, there, there are actually multiple bus routes that are in close proximity. So this is an accessible location for anyone who does not wish to use a car, uh, to, uh, get to shopping or, or employment. So with that, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Daley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good e- good evening, everybody. Uh, yeah, for the record, Tom Daley with, with SLR. Uh, we are the, uh, civil engineer and the landscape architect and traffic engineer and wetland scientist on the, on the site. But, uh, I'll walk you through the site plan at this point. Um, this is a, uh, rendering, it is, as Tim said, is a very large site. Um, so many of the site plans you'll see, we've zoomed, we've zoomed into the, the, the subject area, but this is to give you context. Um, so on the left-hand side is just an existing aerial photograph of the site as it exists today. Um, and on the right-hand side is, is we've overlaid our proposed, um, our, our proposed plan. And one of the things we should talk about is Tim indicated there is a large, uh, wooded buffer between us and I eighty four. And much of that is wetlands. Ever since I've been working on the site, I, every time I go down eighty four, I'm trying to find the site and I can't find it. Um, so when you're coming, uh, I guess northbound on, or be eastbound at that point on eighty four, you'll see off to your right, you'll see the, uh, uh, I, I believe it's, um, Bank of America building and you can, they have some solar panels in front. But you can't even see the existing buildings out there today. So, um, this is a, just a, we thought it was really important to give you in your packet a kind of a zoom out view, uh, so you can get a good context. Uh, this same sheet's in your set, it's just in a black, black and white version. Uh, Shannon, next slide. So as Tim indicated, we, um, I guess, learning from another application that Tim and I worked on, we wanted to make sure, uh, this commission fully understood um, what, uh, what the building height looked what, like. We definitely were interested in, and Sovereign was interested in going to the four-story option, uh, reducing the footprint and using more verticality to get that density. So we have, um, worked on many, many projects where a balloon test is really the, the, the best way to do it. So, um, we worked with town staff, actually town staff was excellent. They actually gave us the vantage points that they thought were our best, best chance to see this building. Um, so we had a little bit of a team of three and then Bruce and Shannon came out later. But we have three people in my office that came out and did this. So this is a view, this is shoot, you're basically looking right up the site. Um, as Tim indicated, we had that turnaround. So off to the right, you're really seeing flanking on this photograph is the two office buildings and this is the driveway. So off in the foreground, you can see two balloons. Um, the black balloon is set at a forty-five-foot building height. That's the building height that we're presenting to you with the four-story. But it's been, our experience is that sometimes you just can't see it and it's, when you're getting it from a vantage point so far away, you really, it's hard to get yourself orientated, even with Google Maps and everything. So we've done this in the past. We then flew a seventy-five-foot balloon and that's what you see at the red color. And that's really to make sure that we, one, can't see it, but to get yourself orientated as you moved around the neighborhood. So, um, so in this particular picture, you can see the seventy-five up above and then that one black balloon right there. Next slide. And what we found was we, I think, and, and Shannon, correct me, I, I believe we identified, um, you know, four, four to six locations around the town and we all scattered. Um, I had one, uh, one of my staff members actually stay on-site. Uh, he would tell us when the balloons were flying straight, um, and, and we would make our shot. But this is a view, so we, in the end, we did not see the black balloon or the forty-five-foot building height from any vantage point except for our on-site. Um, what we did find was we did see the seventy-five-foot balloon, uh, in two locations and that was important because it, it confirmed we're looking in the right orientation. This is a, um, view from Patterson Park. Uh, I think, uh, we're just seeing through the corporate part there. So in the far distance, what you can see is, is the seventy-five-foot balloon. You can't even see the forty-five-foot. Next slide. Now this one was a little more challenging. So, um, this is right across the street up from eighty-four from us. As you know, uh, I believe it's Otis is right across the street from us. And, um, boy, it was hard. And this was, uh, the leaves were just about to fall, so most of the leaves were down except for the low brush. But, um, I did somehow, we stood on the side of, um, uh, I think that's, uh, uh, Cold Highway or Route six, and I did pick up the, the red balloon. So right there is the red balloon and, and, but that, this is a zoomed-in photograph, Shannon, if you go to the next slide. So this is really the perspective of, uh, I'm standing on the edge of uh, of Route Six and you can see just, I'm, so I'm off to the right is the Otis uh building. And just through the parking lot, you can see I've done a red circle and that was the view that you just saw before. And that's the seventy-five-foot balloon. So based upon our analysis, um, and, and much of the view, you really can't see that is, as I said, um, the building is set back uh approximately five hundred and seventy feet off of I eighty-four. And then there's that third, three-hundred-foot uh heavy vegetated um wetland area. So based upon our analysis, and as I said, um, we did invite town staff and they uh came out a little uh at the tail end of this, uh, our study. But um, with our analysis, we, we believe that there is no expectation of seeing this building from any vantage point except for essentially on uh, when you, when, when you enter the site. Thank you. Next slide. So uh, with that, we walk into the site plan itself. Um, so just on the plan, um, I guess it would be uh to the south of this plan itself, you can see the two buildings. Um, as Tim indicated, um, actually, we received a copy of it. This area was proposed for a third building, basically identical architecture as um what it was. And it was flanking around the building. Uh, and they have these two kind of roundabouts that are located here. To be honest, functionally, they don't work today against the, uh, for the two buildings. They were, it was really functionally built for the third building. The two buildings, really, the main entries are on the far side of the building. So the great thing about this layout and even from a residential standpoint, there's really no conflict between the commer, the uh office traffic and, and everything and the proposed building here. So it really functions well to have a mixed-use uh development. What you can see off on this plan is, so we've circulated parking around um the entire building. Uh, on the far north, we have a uh an access drive uh which also has parking. So we've, we really worked hard. We felt we did a very good distribution of parking. But the primary parking is at the um, I guess, lower right. Uh, and we also, working with Spiegel's, we have a nice drop-off area, Port Cocheur there uh where visitors are allowed to come in and out, but that's really the main entry uh there. In the kind of cutout of the building, we have a large amenity space. It'll be a pool, grill areas, outdoor seating. Um, and that'll be a really wonderful place. And with the building kind of wrapping around it, uh, it's gonna be what we expect to be a, a lively area. Uh, to the left of that, we have some additional parking and then to the left of that is a stormwater basin. As Tim indicated, um, we, the part, the property to the north is zone residential. So in your innovation zone, anytime you butt residential, you are required to put together a robust planting plan and your, your regulations actually specific, are very specific on the type of trees and the spacing of those trees. So where you see the label here, it says former Wolf Creek Road. Uh, there is not actually a road there. It's just um apparently a paper street or an old right-of-way. But right along that property line, um, to meet your standard is we have a very heavy uh vegetated buffer made up of deciduous and evergreen um uh species. Uh, we do also have, so really, there's, there's actually three ways to come into this property. The main drive is off the curb, off the uh, the roundabout, but we do have a rear access drive. Currently, there is a connection to Camp Current today. Um, what happens is Sovere, when they have a big, say, fundraising event or, or bigger event, uh Sovereign lets them park in the commercial parking lot. So the driveway there is, is more of a convenience for them. We don't um really need it, but it, it suits both properties. So um, we're gonna maintain that today. And I think Sovereign is still committed to work closely with Camp Current on their, their, um, their big events and let them park in the commercial area to the south of the property. Uh, we do have a overall, so also in that corner, we have a dumpster area. But we do have a internal trash room. So about mid-block on the backside of the building, yeah, right, nice jobs, Shannon. Right there, we have an internal trash room. Um, so that'll all be taken care of. The dumpster area that we're showing there is really an overflow area. So obviously during large holiday pair, periods, maybe we have extra cardboard that can't be taken care of. Uh, that's an opportunity to kind of store that over there or, or under some um uh sometimes, but that's all internal. And in that same area is where all our utilities are coming in. So we've kind of um, Spiegel's has done a very elegant way to have a kind of a back, a house of a building without it feeling like a back of house. And um, that's really uh was, was successfully done there. So as Tim indicated, we have two hundred and fifty-six parking spaces. And uh, while we worked before you on another application, just on the other side of eighty-four, where we got very involved in a shared parking analysis, uh, this project really stands on its own. The parking, uh, we have two hundred and fifty-six spaces and really it's uh pretty much disconnected from uh the commercial parking. But there is a fairly uh remote parking lot, just uh, I guess, uh, if you see the office building just to the right there. Um, yeah, there's a, there's a fairly remote office parking lot there, probably very little used. Um, Bill can confirm that, but I think it's very few, little used. So really, the, the, the highest concentration, the office building is far, is as far away of us. So we think there is, it's, there is some opportunity, some uh shared parking, but we did not use that in the calculations. Uh, next slide. So from a grading standpoint, um, clearly it's, it's, it, it's indicated to me that once they build, they, they built the two buildings, they were planning on the third building. So actually, a lot of the mass earthwork has already been done. There's actually infrastructure that's already out in this area. There's catch basins, piping. Uh, so they were clearly had full intention to build the third building. It just never came around to it. So from a grading standpoint, uh, we're really not doing a lot of earthwork. Uh, our finished floor on this building is uh elevation three eighty. The existing grade at the top of the hill, Tim kind of said, where it kind of a, the, the, the highest point there at the uh turnaround is at three seventy-eight and three seventy-six. So very little uh cuts and fills required uh to build this site. And that's why it really works out well. Uh, we have one small retaining wall uh by the dumpster area. Uh, we could have probably graded it out, but we wanted to minimize the amount of grading and clearing down on that slope. So it seemed to be uh best to just put in a retaining wall. Uh, next slide. As Tim indicated, we uh have received confirmation from the town of Farmington that there's sufficient capacity for sanitary sewer. The site will be served by New Britain Water and we've received confirmation from New Britain Water that there's sufficient water to serve this site. Uh, but also, so uh, those were early enabling items we took care of. In terms of stormwater management, uh, once again, this project is, been designed in a way that it stands on its own. So we looked at um the development area and we have really two stor- as, as we indicated, it's kind of somewhat of a high point. So we have water going to Patterson Park. We all have also water going to the um wetlands out um near eighty-four. So we analyzed both of those watersheds and the watershed that's going towards I eighty-four. We have a stormwater basin. Uh, it's a vegetated basin. Thank you, Shannon, right there. Um, and that's designed, and then on the Patterson Parkway, we have there, there's some topography and once again, we didn't want to do some additional clearing of the vegetation along Patterson Park. So in this particular area, we thought underground chambers were better suited. Both areas are designed for both water quality and quantity. Uh, we analyzed those for the two through the hundred-year storm and showed that there's no increase in runoff for those events. Next slide. We also did a, as required by uh all our applications to this commission, we did do a photometric plan. Um, and we came up, we worked with a local lighting manufacturer. Um, and those lights have been shown here and we provided a photometric plan to show that we're uh zero-foot candles at the property lines. These will be LED lights uh and the benefit, one of the benefits are really LEDs. They're fully uh the, the, the opportunities for um adjusting the operations in terms of dimming them, turn those off at certain hours, even a motion center, they're, they're just endless. So we expect this lighting system to be having all those elements. And so when the management team gets uh, gets established or gets uh set for this um community, uh, we'll work with the town and make sure they're fully understanding of uh the lighting and how that's taken care of. We'll find that balance between safety and then just not having extra lights on at night. Uh, next slide. I think Tim indicated, we went through our wetlands application and the wetlands commission uh came back to us and said, we really like what you're doing on your, on your, this application, but how about going back? Going back and taking a look at, is there any opportunities for us to do retrofits on, you know, the nineteen eighties plan? We're, we know more about stormwater quality now. There's new tools that we can do. What could you do? Go and go back and take a look at that? So uh myself and actually working with Bruce Seer, we came up with multiple uh elements uh that we are going to have, we're gonna go back and make retrofits into the existing stormwater system to, to bring that system up to uh today's standards. And that includes uh kind of mucking out a uh stormwater basin that has, has probably not been maintained uh since the beginning. Um, and then we're uh over towards Patterson Park. We're gonna make some retrofits on stormwater basins to uh promote infiltration off of the parking lot. And then installing a water quality chamber uh to promote additional, we're gonna put some hoods on catch basins. So uh, as we worked our way through the wetlands application, I think we coming out, we're coming out with a, actually a better project. Uh, and, and Sovereign, I appreciate they were uh totally supportive of what we came up with a plan to kind of make these retrofits and improve what's out there together. So um, that's an opportunity.
Tom, let me just interject for a minute. The, the, none of this is required by the regulations. This is the applicant stepping up voluntarily to do something to make the environmental aspects of the property better.
Thank you, Tim. And uh, one, I think this is my final slide before we uh switch over to architecture. But I did say we did receive town staff comments and uh we worked our way all the way through those. Um, I know they're checked off as a possible condition of approval, but we did provide um town staff with a response confirming that we can address all those comments in final uh with the final plans. But I can tell you that uh, yes, I professionally can tell you that uh we can address those and we can address those in a way that it will not make any material changes to the plan that this commission is being presented this evening. Uh, with that, I believe we, next slide, Shannon, I think we move into Ron and architecture. Oh, yeah, got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me, let me introduce our architect, Ron Cooper from Spiegel's and Partners in New Haven. Ron?
Thank you, Tim. Uh, good evening, commissioners. My name is Ron Cooper. I'm an associate principal with Spiegel's and Partners. I've got about forty years' experience, eight with the office. Our office uh is about thirty people and we've done multifamily uh housing for the last eight years. We've done College and Crown in New Haven, two thousand fourteen. We've done two separate projects in Arlington, New Haven in sixteen and eighteen, and we currently have a uh, a, almost identical project this size under construction in New London. Design-wise, we tend to take a very holistic approach to design that balances the massing versus the relationship to the site, aesthetic characteristics um that are applicable to the local paradigms that we might find. We also uh take into account total consumed energy and the appropriate materials based on the site location and also the budget. Next slide, Shannon. Okay, uh, between the ground floor and the first and the second floor. Um, actually, could you go back a slide? It might be more, more helpful with the commissioners to see. Yeah, thank you. So as Tim mentioned before and, and Tom, the relationship to the rotary is uh a small gesture. We've got some frontage on that, on that rotary. However, the, the bulk of the building is obviously pushed back away from it. We felt that it was much better that way in terms of the, the overall massing, getting the parking, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we've got two main entrances, as previously noted. There's one from the main parking lot. We've got a separate pedestrian entrance directly behind there to the uh amenity space. It's a flow-through lobby. And we've also got three separate uh stairways that are identifiable from the outside in terms of uh storefront. We've got common areas that are centrally located, which include lobby, a clubhouse, mailroom, package room and a game room. Uh, also a fitness, uh, fitness room. You'll see a, a rendering of that a little bit later. As I mentioned before, we've got three separate stairs primarily at the, towards the ends of each leg. And we've got two elevators that are a little bit north just south of those grayed-out areas, which are the infrastructure rooms, which include gas, electric, trash and water. Okay, now we can go to the seconds, the next slide. Great, thanks. So obviously, the circulation in a, in a project like this is the, based on a double-loaded corridor. Um, we've got the elevator uh al- almost centrally located. And as I mentioned before, the stairs are at each end. Construction-wise, we use uh what we envision are composite demising walls, which is kind of like a double wall uh on a single plate, which tends to give not only uh a good structural sheer wall, but also provides us with a good sound STC rating of around fifty-five. We've got three unit types, as Tim mentioned. We've got one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom. What we envision is that this whole building will be principally all wood, probably type three A construction. And uh, just as importantly, we've got a separate trash and recycling streams. So we'll have uh trash chutes at each floor and recycling will be either by a second chute or it'll be a separate pickup. Next slide, please. So here's a uh, kind of like a, a roof plan which illustrates the overall area. What's shaded in the perimeter is what we call false gables or parapets. Um, what's populated throughout the entire roof are condensing units. So the overall roof is envisioned to have a membrane roof system. Uh, as I mentioned before, it's got a, a forty-two-inch parapet. Uh, in the gray areas are basically shingled false gables. And what else is extended to the roof are overruns for the elevator and the trash exhaust. Uh, what we envision for the mechanical system is a split HVAC system, sometimes referred to as aquatherm, where we have instant hot water uh providing heat and the uh, within the unit ins- inside and the condensing units on the roof, which provide cooling. We'll have continuous ventilation for all the units through a bathroom exhaust. We'll have LED lights. Uh, the entire project will be protected by an NFPA thirteen sprinkler system. Uh, we'll have Energy Star appliances. The windows will be high-energy rated and what we also normally put in these kinds of projects is an R forty roof insulation layer. Next slide, please. No, there you go. Okay. Well, it's been that much time. This is really a programmatic matrix that shows areas and, and breakdowns and occupancy loss as far as the overall area versus the net. So I'm not gonna bother you with that, but the main purpose of this slide is to show you that we've got three uh, three, three unit types. We've got a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom. Ten percent of the units will be type A and also FHA compliant. If all the units have to be Hs, FHA compliant, but ten percent as the type As will be also ANSI or ADA compliant. Um, Tim mentioned before, we've got a total of two hundred and four units broken down into a hundred and fifty-two, one, forty-four, two-bedroom and eight, three-bedroom. What we also like to point out, uh, a project typically like this is that we got a third-party commissioning agent involved, which uh handles the HVAC and MEP uh final checkouts. And usually, we like to get a third-party consultant involved in terms of handling energy savings rebates, helping uh with exterior envelope detailing and exterior to unit ceiling details in terms of error infiltration and sound. Next slide, please. Okay, here's the, the exterior elevations. Uh, what we've tried to do, uh, you'll see a little bit more in the, in the renderings, but uh, we've tried to blend an overall aesthetic using traditional forms in contemporary ways. Uh, in this way, kind of has the mix of an old and familiar with the new. Uh, we felt that was a very appropriate to Farmington. Um, as you can see in the, in it, in many of these, uh, specifically the second one, you can see the main entrance is dead center. Um, right there, perfect. And we've got, so what we try to do is we try to express the entrances uh with a specific language of a gable. Um, we've got the secondary stairs identified again with a gable, but it'll also be a complete vertical storefront system. So that'll be completely different than the material used to plow the building. And as we mentioned before, uh, this project is four stories and we envision shingles for the roof. Next slide, please. So this slide presents uh two things. Number one, materials. We, materials are in the bottom rendering. What we're illustrating is a mix of horizontal ship lap with vertical lap siding. We see this as being the fiber cement, which is a very low maintenance project, product. We'll have continuous rigid exterior insulation to help get our R values up. We'll have perimeter under slab insulation. And what we also envision in terms of the overall building height is that the roof will be approximately 42 feet, giving, or 41.6, giving us a parapet height of 45. The maximum peak will be 50. But as you'll see in, also in subsequent slides, the overall average is the 45. That's what that dotted line shows at the, at the top. You can go to the next slide. Okay, with this, this is just, we want, wanted to show this to you as well. This is a, a kind of like more or less of a diagram that presents the areas that are actually extending over the 45 foot height. We've got the false gables located, the elevator overrun is possibly envisioned to do that as well as the trash chute. What, what is allowable is 25% and what we predict is about 13%. Next slide. Again, this is another, just a diagrammatic element. It shows the false gables built into the design and how we took into account what is below the 45 and what is above. Next slide. This shows the, you've seen this before from the start. This is a rendering of the exterior showing the, the outdoor amenity space, swimming pool, cabanas, railing areas, fire pits. And at the bottom, we have some alternate views, kind of putting together what you saw previously in the, the 2D elevations into more of a 3D look, where you can see a gestures of infill, vertical towers and gables versus a more horizontal, possibly in the, in the horizontal ship lap. And the last slide. What this does, obviously, what we're trying to communicate here is not only do we have a nice club room and we have a nice fitness room, sure, but the quality level that we're anticipating is that of a high level that matches the high level on the outside. So what we envision is that this is a, going to be a quality product applicable to the local residents. It'll be fair market rate and it's going to be a great project, I can tell you that. And I think that'll do it for me.
Thank you, Ron. Yep. Before, before there are even any questions from commissioners, let me assure you, there will be no roof dick on this building. Okay. Emily Foster, traffic, thank you.
Hello, I'm Emily Foster with SLR Consulting and I was one of the traffic engineers that worked on the traffic impact study. For this study, we did an extensive data collection effort, including roadway volumes, intersection volumes, crash summary statistics. We reviewed the roadway conditions, estimated the site generated traffic volumes and then did assessment of the future traffic operations, including intersection capacity analysis and queue analysis. For this study, the study area were the intersections of Patterson Park Road at the I-84 eastbound ramps, Patterson Park Road at the driveway and then Patterson Park Road at Two Mile Road. Next slide, please. So the two, the 204 dwelling units are expected to generate 75 new total trips during the AM peak hour and 80 new trips during the PM peak hour. And just one thing I wanted to note is that, as Tim said earlier, the entire site was approved by the Office of State Traffic Administration in 1987. And that was for the Pond View Corporate Center. And that was for three office buildings. The third one was never built. And just wanted to note from a traffic standpoint, using industry standard rates, the same rates that we used for this. An office building, it would be expected to generate double the amount of daily traffic. So a residential use will generate less traffic than, than the, than the office building would have. Next slide, please. So as stated, we reviewed the intersection capacity and queue analysis for future conditions. The year we chose to study was 2024. And the intersection capacity analysis results revealed that all study intersections are expected, are not expected to experience any reductions in overall level of service as a result of the proposed residential building. Additionally, all study intersections are not expected to experience any significant increases in queues because of the increase in traffic of the residential building. So as such, no impacts to intersection operations and no safety concerns to the adjacent roadway network are anticipated with the construction of the proposed project. That's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. In the application materials at tab 16, there is a market study that was prepared by SLR. The author not able to be with us tonight, so I'm going to just summarize it. Obviously, we're aware, we've been aware from day one of working on this, that the town of Farmington is looking at several multifamily proposals. So we thought it was important to sort of take stock of the existing multifamily stock that proposed and point out the various attributes and issues with each, each type of proposal. So we brought this in front of the Economic Development Commission on March 9th. And as I mentioned, it resulted in a positive referral letter, which is in your supplemental materials. But I'll just highlight these points. The, the fact, what, the study basically points out the factors that we believe support this plan in this location. Number one is that the demand for the type of units proposed here is well documented in, in the marketplace. One of the demographic trends, of course, in Farmington is that you have an aging population, which, so that creates pressure or a need to have housing that will be attractive to the younger side of the population, millennials, young professionals and so forth. And this is the, the type of housing that is appropriate to that, that age demographic. More specifically, the proposed units here are exactly, to a word, exactly what the 2018 Plan of Conservation and Development identified as desirable to support and balance the health center and the success of the medical office campus zone around the medical center. The study also points out, maybe the next, next slide Shannon, that the health center and the related businesses and employment continue to grow, which is, if I can go to the next slide Shannon. And one more, please. Yes, they taught the, the study and this slide and the next slide talks about the jobs growth balance in Farmington versus surrounding towns. And in Farmington, the number of jobs far exceeds the available housing units. Now, of course, in some ways, that's a desirable characteristic, but the, the next slide, I believe Shannon, points out the, the ratios. Farmington at 2.75 and most of the other towns hovering around 1.0. So just only to emphasize that there is room for additional housing units, but also a need for housing units to support and stabilize the job growth and the job mecca that really, that is Farmington at this point. And then the last slide, I think highlights the, that this is a different location. So we have 402 in the upper part of the slide, Pond View in the lower right on the east side of 84, the Marriott on the west side. And then of course, the, the other, I guess, the other two major, Colt Highway developed my metro, metro realty is the red star at lower left. But the other multifamily proposals in front of you would be to the upper left in the west and northwest portion of Farmington. So the, for those reasons, we think that the, the apartments are documented as in terms of need by the, the market study. Last thing I'll point out in terms of support of the application in tab three of the supplemental materials that we filed on Friday. And those of you who sat through 402 Farmington will recall hours and hours spent on this. There are standards for granting of a change of zone in Article 2, Section 12 of the regulations, seven different criteria. I'm not going to go through these in detail, except to say that we've gone through them in our compliance chart and pointed out why, how, why and how we comply with each of those criteria. And then finally, in Article 4, Section 31, which is the special innovation floating zone itself, there are three criteria. Proposal must be in harmony with the objective of the POCD, which of course it is. The proposed plan needs to be superior to a plan possible under the existing zoning regulation. And I think that the deduction there is that the office was never built because the demand for additional office space did not materialize. And then the third is that the development is in harmony with actual permitted development of adjacent properties, which we've talked about several times in this presentation. Just to finish up, Madam, Madam Chair and members, you have three votes to take on this application. The first is on the zone change, which of course we're combining with the site plan as, as per your regulations. But we point out that the, the zone change vote requires a majority of the full commission membership under, that's a state statute. The vote on the site plan, should you choose to take that separately, requires a majority of a quorum. And then of course, you need the five, six vote to approve the four stories, which would be five, six of the quorum that, that votes on the application. So just to conclude, we believe this site plan and the rezoning meet all of the relevant criteria consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, attractive and well-thought-out architecture, highly amenitized, an excellent location and in many characteristics that we've outlined, differentiated from the other multifamily proposals that you have on your plate. So that's maybe just a little more than an hour. I want to thank, thanks staff again and thank my team. And we are here obviously to answer any questions. And I will say, I did not, I checked the week, been checking the website. I did not see any public comment, maybe I missed it, but I, if there had been, we would of course responded to it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Thank you to the project planners for really an extremely thorough presentation and for providing an exceptional, exceptional level of detailed information. It's very helpful to us so we can carefully consider the many aspect, of aspects of the project. Just really well done. Thank you for that. Commissioners, as you heard, there are three things we're looking, we're going to vote on, perhaps today, if you need more time, next meeting. Hopefully not, but it is, you know, a consensus. We're looking at the zone change, the site plan review and the building height vote. This is a public hearing, so we're going to open it up to the public too. Unlike another project we recently looked at, it's not coming back the second time. The next time this project comes up, we'll be over the building permits and the applicant will work closely with our building department and of course Shannon. All right, so this is, this is our shop to ask all of our questions and then I'll make a decision on behalf of our town. All right, so Patrick, I turn it over to you, please. Questions, please.
Yeah, my question is for Mr. Cooper. It's more of a curiosity question and I, I missed a part of it. The, you said that the heating system in this, in these apartments is going to be a, what is it, an on-demand water and then the?
There's a, there's a furnace. What the, the current system is that we're considering is a split system, which utilizes a instant hot water for the domestic use, but also there's a gas-fired furnace.
So each unit gets its own?
Yes.
Has its own furnace and?
Yes, yes.
And then obviously the condenser on, on the roof.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No questions other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike Grabulis?
Obviously, the, the location, I think, is great in Patterson Park. We have no issues with the traffic, the parking. My only question would be, what's the conversation been like with Camp Current?
Well, I'll do the best I can with that commissioner. You know, Camp Current has been, it operates in the summer. I believe the, let's see, Mr. Gentile, did you, did you end up having a direct conversation with the current, Camp Current?
So we spoke to them numerous times. So the, the main relationship that we have with Camp Current is it's a parking arrangement. So we allow them to use our parking lot in case, I think it's of an emergency and for select special events. So I think, you know, the, the conversations with Camp Current have been mostly surrounding that and the impact that that, you know, having that parking would have on them. And I think that this, all it does is add additional parking. I think that was the, the main concern that, that Camp Current had expressed.
So you, you brought this to them and that was their, their concern?
Yeah, I haven't, I honestly have not had a conversation specific to the development. The last conversation I had to them related, specific to just, just parking. And it has been, you know, we have had a really positive relationship with them on that.
Yeah, obviously when, when camp is in session, you know, you're going to have that tree, leaves on the trees and stuff and, you know, less of a concern than it would be during the winter. They like the apartment breakdown of the 152 and 40 something, two-bedroom. Other than that, I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mike. Scott?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the thorough presentation too. It answered a lot of my questions before we got to this point. To piggyback on Commissioner Grabulis's conversation about Camp Current, is it, is this building visible from Camp Current? Maybe I missed that in the balloon test section, do we know? Is the apartment complex visible from that side?
It would probably be likely visible from, from Camp Current. We didn't go, that's private property, so we didn't go onto their property. But there, I think most of their buildings are facing probably more towards the lake. And as you can see on this graphic here, there's a heavy green line along the property line. So that will be a heavy vegetated buffer that has to be put in with per-year reg. So over time, that will screen a lot of that. But I, I can't say, I did not physically go onto their property.
Tom, I, I can talk, speak to that a little bit. I did go to the Camp Current property when I did a site visit just by myself. I didn't necessarily go into the buildings on Camp Current, but I drove in and walked around. That vegetative boundary that you see on the north side, that is principally there right now. But what we anticipate is that when we go in and clear and grub and get the building built, obviously, some of it to the south will be taken down just for construction purposes. So what I'd, to answer your question, I think right now, nothing's visible during the summertime. Wintertime, it might be visible for a year or two until the, the vegetative buffer gets grown in. But I, I don't, long-term, I don't think it's going to be visible.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all the questions I had, thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
And the, just to say, also the former Wolf Pit Road, Ron, correct me, Ron, that's always, that's already, that's a paper street and it's already, it is still currently heavily vegetated.
Yes, that's, that's.
So there's actually an additional buffer between the two of us.
Yes, correct. That's what I was referring to.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, hi everyone. I'll echo my fellow commissioners, thank you for the presentation, especially the balloon test. That was helpful for me to visualize. Just, just a couple from me. So the current building's going to have four stories. How, how many units are on each level and how many units would be on the fourth level?
Ron Cooper, can you take that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I have an actual breakdown that I can refer to, but if we've got four levels and the, the first level is probably two-thirds occupied by units. Well, we have Sixty, eighty, Probably seventy, yeah, I'd say probably sixty. Sixty units per per floor would give you a hundred and eighty, yeah, something like that, maybe fifty or sixty. If you need that is, I can get you, if you want, I can, I can look at the floor plan and give you that.
I I guess it's two hundred divided, that makes, that sounds about right.
Yeah.
No, I was just, yeah, okay. And then
Ron, Ron Cooper, is that answer on slide thirty?
Let me check.
Is it there?
I don't have slide thirty in the book, but let me check my
Shannon has it on the screen here.
I don't think that breaks out by floor.
Yeah, I don't think it breaks it down by floor.
And I don't know that we have a slide or or something that does that, but certainly within the site plans that we provided within the architectural plans. There were Breakdowns of the first floor, second, third floors, the fourth floor.
Yeah. Okay. And just my other, just my other question, just for for those office buildings, this Do you own those office buildings as well? And is there any plans to? I I'm thinking about your case study that you talked through. Is there any plans to Change some of those floors to apartments as well?
So thanks for the question. So we do own the office buildings as well. We purchased the office buildings in June of two thousand and nineteen, so You know, right before COVID. And when we purchased them, they were right around seventy percent occupied. We made a pretty heavy investment into reamenatizing the office buildings, both from You know, kind of cosmetic perspective and then also for from a backup building perspective. And I'm proud to say that we've actually leased up the office buildings to ninety-three percent as of this week, so You know, they're flourishing, you know, Very well performing office buildings at this point.
Got it. And my last one, just, you know, because it's a mixed use, is there any Plans for retail? You sort of have business, you have residential, any Retail plans? I don't know if that that area works for you.
No, we have a, we had a cafe in there. As you can probably imagine during COVID, a lot of the Cafes and, you know, kind of small service restaurants in these office buildings just, you know, couldn't continue operating. Our plan is we did finish the renovation, so to try to bring back an operator into the office building That would serve as both the office tenants and the residential tenants.
Got it. Thank you. No, no more questions.
Matt, to answer question fifty-seven is your answer.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Sure.
There we go, Ron.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm good, Inez. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, you got it. Nice. And Liz?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick questions. How many ADA units did you say you had? You you gave a formula and I didn't quite catch.
Ten, ten percent.
Ten percent. So if it's two hundred units, so approximately twenty units.
Well, yeah, it depends upon the final breakdown as far as The the count, it's always going to be ten percent, but what they do is that it has to be equitable. So if you've got An odd number of whatever, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, you always have to round out. So, you know, there's a good chance it might be eleven, eleven percent. Just based on the rounding factor.
Okay, that that answered my next question was, it would be distributed across all.
It's distributed across the unit types and also location in the building. And usually the preference is given Towards stairs and elevators.
Okay. Okay. And another question in this, looking at the outside Views, are there any balconies?
At this point, we have a few balconies at schematic design level. You're still kind of, you know, Flushing things out. We've got, currently, we've got a small number of recessed balconies, No projected balconies and a few Juliet balconies.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought I had seen, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure. Okay, I I think that that answers it very thorough, very, very informative. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And Mike Walsh?
Great presentation. Just Two questions on the sustainability features you guys had mentioned. One being any thought of putting solar photovoltaics anywhere on the property? Carport certainly be a great fit for you. And then the second one is electrical vehicle chargers. Any plans to include those in the project?
Ron, can you take that?
Yeah, between Tom and me, We don't really have enough Room on the on the roof to put PV panels because of the condensing unit farms, so It would have to be, like you said or mentioned, you know, it would have to be site located. That would be My guess is that based on the current site plan, we just don't have enough Area to make it feasible. You do need a a certain size Area to make it, to get a return on it. In a, in a small area, just probably would not do it. And what was the second question?
Do you guys have any plans for electric vehicles? Are you going to put in chargers or at least infrastructure?
Yes, most likely we'll put in the infrastructure. Putting in charging stations is not that big of a deal.
Yeah, the the site plan is well suited for it. And and I, it's amazing how just the last six months. Every multi, I, there, I even have some jobs where they're, they're saying, can we add a few more? So the nice thing about it is these new products that are coming out are really mobile. So what we'll probably do at a minimum is just put some spare conduits out there And put the infrastructure in. But we're really in a dynamic time in terms of these charging stations and people are demanding it, so Clearly, we will putting the infrastructure in and then we'll see how the market will tell to put these in, but yeah, we're And the parking lot doesn't have to change. It really is, it's something pretty easily done.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Commissioners. Alright, I I do have a couple of questions. What is the timing? When will this project be live or the rentals will be ready?
So I can take this one. I think we're, we're hoping to plow forward as soon as possible, so, you know, the next phase obviously Would be doing construction documents and permanent permitting. But, you know, just kind of dependent on that, obviously, as everyone's heard of kind of the supply chain, the supply chain constraints that have been going on, stuff's getting pushed out a little bit, but we're You know, looking to move forward as quickly as possible, so, you know. Concern, you know, eighteen months would be, yeah, some sort of just kind of rough timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. I was fascinated by the balloon test. Thank you, Tom. I think you should do this every time. Just saying, it is so helpful. Seriously, we've had projects where just, it was difficult to kind of figure out where the building lies. Will any of the units? Are you guys planning to offer short term rentals?
No.
Because it's a huge need in in this area in general.
Are you talking about, are you talking about Airbnb type?
No, it's, I'm talking about people moving up or down, you know, housing, moving to a bigger house or smaller house or Whatever, but they need temporary housing, so similar to like the Studio two nine nine. Where not all the leases are twelve month?
Oh, so we, I I think in in other properties, we've considered leases as short as six months. Generally, you know, especially in a market, you know, the As, you know, Tim mentioned in the market study, you know, the demand for permanent housing here is is significant enough That, you know, I think for the most part, we would be looking for, you know, at least, at least to be doing six month leases. But, you know, we're open. I mean, if it's a, if it's a strong need for the town, as long as, you know, we're We assume that we will be full fairly quickly here. You know, if there's a way to bridge that with some short term rentals, we're, we're open to it, but we're not interested in doing, you know, this Airbnb or short term in, in, you know, in that capacity.
I get it. But thank you, I I do think that you you will You know, I guess I'll just go right into it. You know, I looked at the market study and definitely, you know, lots of data, good information. You know, I was thinking about the pandemic and how things may have changed. I was thinking about, you know, who's going to occupy it based on, you know, the information here. You know, two thousand, seven, eight, nine. You know, millennials were moving back home, right? Economy tanked. I think we were expecting more millennials to leave and buy. Of course, they have been, you know, pretty dominant buyers along with investors, but I don't think we, we're, we're hoping more will leave, right? I think this project is is wonderful. Rentals are in high demand. Some people will be priced out of buying or some people will not want to be a homeowner, so having that option is great in town. Right now, we do not have that. I definitely see a need for some kind of short For something to someplace, that's why I'm asking you, is We really have no short term housing. I think six months, if you offered some six month, I think There will be a lot of interest Based on my experience. Hold on, my notes are all over the place.
Take your time.
Alright, thank you. Yes, I just thought the market study was definitely interesting. Let's see, you already talked about the The price points, I thought, I thought they were fair. With the medical quarter, you know, great location. I'm glad you're not building an office building. I don't think anyone Is or should be, so thank you. Let's see here. The project for the pond, you know, that's Obviously spearheaded by Hartford and New Britain and I guess we'll be involved at some point. So we have absolutely no information except for the RFPs?
There is no information on those.
Commissioner, with the the RFP came out in November, we recently tried to see if there had been progress and we were unable to Learn anything about that. It just may be that the city of Hartford is still processing the responses. There may be funding issues that we just don't know.
Okay. I don't know enough about. Go ahead.
The plan, the plan to do the improvements is still there. They they haven't, they haven't terminated that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just wondering what the impact may be to two mile, right?
Well, Attorney Hollister, I did read the the RFP and you can obviously correct me if I'm mistaken, but it sounds like these are Our improvements to bring it up to its I'll say it's it's intended use with respect to it being a beach and water way, I I Don't believe there's, it's not a redevelopment. It it seemed like it was an RFP for a management of the facility and as well as Bring it up to its Like an intended use.
Yes, it's to restore the maintenance that should have been ongoing, I guess is a way to say it.
But is it that area across from Camp Current?
It's directly across.
Yeah, okay. Just, I was just thinking more of traffic, but that's
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's Necessarily going to be a generator of traffic and I believe when it is being maintained, the Children that utilize Camp Current go across the street to utilize, so Yeah, I don't know that there's a lot of Additional vehicular traffic and The residential traffic, likely the coming and going from the residential property would not conflict with The coming and going for children crossing the the street. They should not, you know, on a regular basis.
True, true, you're right. The parking, and I guess maybe that's more for you, Shannon. So there's a change in law, right, regulation? Is this something that we need to look at as a town or?
We, staff has been looking at it. And we're reviewing whether or not we're going to opt out. We have until January of next, of two thousand and twenty-three to opt out. So that's a conversation that's come, there's a couple of things with the public act that was approved This past summer That we have been looking at and there are, I think there's two or three elements of the public act that have an opt out provision. So we are looking at that.
Thank you. And based on your review, we have adequate parking here?
Yes, particularly there was an, one, it it's, it's the law, so This is what they're proposing to put through and it is compliant with the law. And two, given that there is proximity to the large Office buildings in the parking. This is a, this is one of those ideal situations for a mixed use parking situation that the peaks are offset. Again, not everyone's at the residential Facilities, while you're, you know, they've left and gone to their office, all the office people are in at the office buildings, they leave, the residential people come home. So their complementary uses typically viewed as complementary uses from a parking standpoint. And With my summary, we would normally allow a reduction of some of the parking. It would be deferred. In this case, it doesn't really need to be deferred because it's there on onsite. It's all owned by the same Entity, so if there is a parking issue, Mr. Gentile will get to deal with that. Whether it's his office tenants or his residential tenants.
And I will say, we had in the, in the case study that I sent you, that was actually a really good example, obviously, parking in a downtown situation is much Is much more limited than we have in the suburbs. And there is a symbiotic relationship between the office use and the residential use in that You know, really, I mean, during the day, most residents are at work and are taking their cars and at night, as As was mentioned, you know, the office is completely empty and all the residents were there. So there should be, you know, more than ample parking here, you know, for both.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, this is Tim Hollister. I would point out that The alternative to relying on the state law change was proposing A text amendment to the parking ratios and we thought that was much more complicated than than we need, than the Is needed in this situation, especially where you still have Couple of months to consider the opt out that Shannon mentioned.
That's right, thank you.
We need to do that.
Okay. So I guess I was the last in line for now. Shannon, it's a public hearing. Let's see if we have anyone on the line.
Correct, so I know there is, technically, I can see there's technically no other attendees, but for the record, I am going to ask If anyone has called in to speak regarding this application to ask questions or make comments to the commission, please raise your hand using the Zoom Feature and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. And I will ask one more time, if anyone has called in to make comments regarding the application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. So you may address the commission regarding the seventy-four Patterson Park application. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
Alright. Commissioners, before I close the public hearing, any final questions? Okay. At this point, the public hearing is closed on this matter. I need a motion in a second and then before we can discuss.
Yeah, so we're, so we'll do a motion for the zone change in the site plan together as And then the five, six vote for the height after?
Well, I think it's one motion, right? And when we vote, I think we should Go ahead.
Okay. If you want to vote, hang on, I'm going to interject. If you want to, if you think you want to do separate votes, then they should be separate motions.
But discussion separately on each one, I think.
Well, that's fine, but the Discussion's going to overlap and that's I'm, I'm in general okay with that, but If you're going to do separate votes, you need separate motions.
Right, so, so, yeah, so we'll do the, we'll do the The zone change in the site plan as one. Okay, so Patrick Carrier, I make the motion To approve the application By Pond LLC for change of zone from from PR zone to special innovation floating zone And site plan approval for multifamily apartment building at seventy-four dash seventy-six. Or I should say seventy-four and seventy-six Patterson Park Road.
Second?
Micro Bullis, second.
Alright, and discussion. We can go in order. I guess maybe we should just go in order. Alright, Patrick.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, it's You know, as, as was presented, it's It's a night or a product that the town of Farmington needs is, is, that's pretty clear. That's what the P O C D is saying, so I think the location's great. So I, yeah, no, I have no issues. I think it's a great product for the location.
Thank you. Micro Bullis?
I would just echo what Pat said, the location works. You know, I certainly would have no issue with the parking over there as I've been over there and there was always plenty of parking. Yep, that's all I have.
Thank you. And Scott?
Yeah, I agree with previous Commissioners as well. I think it's a great project location is is ideal. I I don't see any concerns at all.
Matt? Matt.
I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I, uh, I sort of approve this and I think it's a good project for this area.
And Liz, thank you. And Liz.
Uh, I concur. I think, um, good project, good place, good time for the town. Um, so all in all, no problems.
Thank you. And, uh, Mike, you don't, uh, Mike Walsh, you're, uh, you're not part of the vote, um, for this. But, um, thank you for your prior questions. Yeah, I, I agree. I think having this, uh, type of housing option in this section of town, um, is a wise choice for this partial. And, uh, you know, I think, uh, we need something for the growing medical, uh, quarter in town for sure. Um, you know, as long as it's executed the way, you know, we saw today, um, I think it's a positive project for town. And, um, it makes us more attractive. Um, and I, I don't, we don't have this type of a project anywhere in town right now. So I agree with all of you too. Um, all right. So, uh, we're ready to vote on the zone change and cycle plan? Okay.
And that's kind of a quick question.
Sure.
Sorry. Do we need to think about those? Uh, and I'm just curious administrative, like the conditions and all the engineering department conditions, or is that just part of the, part of this motion?
Yep. So, yes, the engineering comments, definitely, uh, I don't even, I don't remember what Patrick, uh, voice ordered it.
It, it did not, was, it was not included.
All right.
You could request an amendment to the motion to add those.
Good catch, Matt.
Okay, so Patrick Carrier, I amend my motion to include the engine, that the engineering comments addressed, be addressed to the satisfaction of town staff prior to construction.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Great catch, Matt. All right, we're ready for vote? All right, let's, let's do, uh, one by one, because we're going in this matter. So again, uh, we're voting for the zone change site plan review. Patrick.
I, I'm in favor.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. So unanimous. And then we need a motion and a second for the, uh, building height.
Oh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make the motion to approve the four-story forty-five foot in height um, proposed by Pond LLC, um, at seventy-four, seventy-six Patterson Park Road.
Likeable second.
Discussion on the height?
I, I'm, uh, Patrick Carrier, I mean, I think it's appropriate. I think, you know, if you're, um, I think in this location, um, there's no question that having that four-story just makes it more efficient. Um, and you're getting more units in less area.
Mike?
No, I agree with Pat.
Scott, how about you?
Yeah, I agree as well.
Matt?
Same, I agree.
And Liz?
I agree, and the balloon test really made it obvious or made it clear what we were going to be able to see. So I think it's a good, good choice.
Okay. I agree that, uh, the location for, uh, this project is, uh, optimal and, uh, with the, I love that balloon test, excuse me. No residences, uh, around. It's a good spot. So, all right, so we have a motion and a second. We did discussion. So, um, let's vote on the building height. Patrick?
I, I am, I am for it.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. So unanimous. So great, uh, conversation commissioners, great questions. And, uh, applicant, thank you for just an amazing package.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to, to the commission. Thank you to staff and thank you to my team. Good night.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Shannon, you're up.
I am up. I have a one planner's report item for you folks this evening and it is in the process. Driver error.
Okay, we have a building permit request in for the demolition of three ninety-three, um, Scott Swamp Road. As I outlined in the, uh, agenda review, the, uh, current owner is requesting to demolish the structure. It is just under seventy-five years old. Um, so it doesn't require any additional notifications from the building department for that demolition. They have spoken with the owner twice. He has confirmed that the basement is being fully removed and backfilled and the area will be seeded. For now, at this point, there is no other proposal for the property. They won't market the property and if there's interest, uh, build, they're also looking, um, perhaps at, at doing something else, assembling some properties along that frontage. But there is no other plan at this particular point in time. If there is in the future for anything, obviously anything other than single-family home would come before this commission anyway. So this is the notification that's required as part of Article Five, Section Two. If anyone has any concerns, questions, uh, otherwise, uh, let me know. I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll be, uh, I'll go ahead and proceed with signing off on the demolition permit, uh, tomorrow morning. So, any, any questions, any, any, anything from anybody? I'm seeing a lot of head shaking. Okay.
Thank you, Shannon, for the heads up.
So that's, uh, that was it for that one. Um, the zoning training reminder from the twenty-ninth, uh, thank you, I got a, a few. I've been, um, I forgot to send it out. So I sent it out this afternoon for those that needed it. Um, so it did go out this afternoon. When you get an opportunity, if you could, uh, review it, I think for, for some of you, particularly any new members that weren't able to join us in person, um, it may help understand some of the procedural requirements that we have to adhere to. Um, and then I'm obviously happy to answer any, any questions once you're, have had an opportunity to look at that. And then the final item that I had under planner's report was an update regarding in-person meetings. And we believe we have ironed out our IT items.
Okay.
So that we could move to in-person. We did have a hearing for the twenty-fifth, but that, um, has been canceled. There was a change in, in the application. So, it was for a necessary structure. It, it's no longer needed. So there is no hearing on the twenty-fifth, so we could move as soon as the next meeting to, uh, in-person. We will have, trying to think, there are a couple of applications that have just come in. I think most of them are going to be to accept the application and then schedule a public hearing for May. So it might be a good one to give it a, a try because there won't be public hearing.
Yeah.
So, but it does, as I've said before, we, the intent to do this is to have the majority of the commission, majority slash all of the commission in person. And this off, offers, um, then the hybrid element offers flexibility to those that may be traveling for work. Have an unexpected hiccup with, um, you know, childcare and need to be home, something on that nature. Uh, and then certainly, uh, allow that same flexibility to applicants that have multiple meetings in an evening or other personal situation that arise. Um, it, it's, we do, if we're going to do this, it needs to be the majority in, in the building. So, which I'm happy to do.
I think it's time, but any huge reservations from anyone? I find it helpful coming in.
Kind of speaking our favor, hold your peace. Otherwise, we're going to be in person on May twenty-fifth or April twenty-fifth. Sorry, in two weeks, we'll be in person.
Sounds good. No, no reservations for me.
Sounds good.
Sounds like a great idea.
All right. Okie dokie.
Wow. It's been a while. I'll do my hair. I'm just kidding.
Rip that Band-Aid off and get started. Okay. I will let IT know.
Since we, seriously, like, we were on today.
Yeah, now the applications moved. But I don't have anything else from a planner's report standpoint.
Is bridge re-zooming, bridge work, uh, universal, which, um, the one that?
I have, but I don't know, but I can ask Russ. Yeah, I don't know.
Uh, Shannon, I, I do have a question. Any, uh, anything on the Walgreens building? Is that still just vacant? Is there any talk or anything going on?
Uh, I have, no, well, yes, it's still vacant and, uh, there has been talk on it. So I have a building permit application in, and it is for a Dollar General, Dollar Tree.
Let's check Facebook. I'm sorry.
It's not, it's not Dollar General. Family Dollar?
No, it's not Family Dollar.
It's the other, Dollar Tree.
So it's one of, it's Dollar Tree. So the building permits in, um, he, they were changing, uh, they were making some changes to doors. And they were making some changes to windows and not so much replacing windows, but opaking some of them and doing some things that didn't necessarily fall in line with the original TPZ and A D R C approvals. And this is located in the Union Bill Center Zone. So not only does it have A D R, uh, TPZ purview for anything exterior to the building, it also has the Architectural Design Review Committee. So we have had extensive conversations. It's the architect, um, submitted the plans for building permit review. So we, Bruce and I tore him apart. We've been in touch with the architect. We've also made them aware of some concerns, general concerns we have with the landscape and maintenance of the property. Uh, in using this as an opportunity to have that conversation, because we've not had successful conversations with the property owner who is an out-of-state owner. So, uh, they are looking at separating the permit and pulling an internal modification building permit to do all the interior innovations and then reeval, reevaluating how they want to manage the exterior. Because even things such as signs have to go to A D R C. So anything doorway, window, anything exterior, they've pulled out of the, our planning is my understanding. I don't believe it's happened yet. Going to pull out of the building permit so they can proceed with the interior and then there'll be a separate run-through with any exterior, anything. I was very clear. If there, uh, uh, change anything, anything on the outside of the building, on the outside of the parking lot, a door, a window, a sticker, uh, whatever, then they are welcome to come in and have that conversation with A D R C. So, um, so that's where, where that stands. Um, so it will be moving through. You will see it at some point, uh, depending upon how, what they choose to proceed with or, or redact from the application. At a minimum, there certainly will be the signage. So, but yeah, that'll be coming through.
So stay tuned, huh?
Okay, thanks. And what about the, uh, what is it? Charles Commons? I know there was construction going on. Is that going forward? Or what's, where, where does that stand?
Yep, so Charles House, uh, they are, have been doing due diligence work and doing additional investigation, some of it for environmental, um, needs and some of it for additional borings in order to appropriately design foundations. So the, uh, the bank has gotten involved and the bank solicited a, another developer to come in, take a look at the property and move this through to get to construction. We've had a number of inquiries over the last four or five years. And we'd have these inquiries and they'd go away and we'd never hear from them again. We'd have inquiries and they'd go away, et cetera. This one seems to be sticking. They are actually having some detailed conversations with C E E P. There's some documentation that needs to be finalized with deep before the property can actually transfer uh, to this new owner. So they were looking, i- it's taking, as with a lot of things, for a variety of reasons, it's taking a little longer than anticipated. But they should be, they're anticipating within the next four to six weeks that that transfer will take place. And then once that happens, then they will be in a position to actually get a construction schedule in place and take a look at what their next steps are. They are looking at proceeding basically with the plan as is. I think there were some, ideally some minor modifications. They understand if there's any modification to anything exterior, um, from a site plan standpoint, that it needs to come back, uh, to the commission. Um, we have met with them a, a few times. So right now, though, any of the, the work that you've seen out there is, is solely just for investigative purposes and additional drilling and test pits that were needed in order to quantify some of the environmental work that needed to be done and also get some borings for foundations for the buildings that are going in.
Isn't time kind of coming up with that permit or is it this year or?
No, so we had looked at that, um, and I'd have to look back on the latest.
Get more time.
Yeah, because of the executive order from COVID, it's stayed the permit time for all land use permits by four hundred and forty days. So, I know.
Lovely.
They were.
Reading about it for a while.
So, um, they were due to renew their permit last fall. I want to say September, September, October of twenty twenty-one. And so we got a legal opinion from Bob Di Crescenzo. He went through, we figured out the math. I believe i- it, because of the four hundred and forty days, it makes their, that current, their last permit that they got, the renewal, uh, valid through January of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
And we did extensive emails back and forth with Chris Hope regarding that.
Okay.
So they're, they're aware of all the timing. So that's the current status of.
Thank you. Thank you for, like, having all this knowledge.
You know, it just dawned on me tonight that we, we approved six hundred, uh, apartments uh, after that two hundred and sixty-eight, you know, so I'm, I just, after looking through this, uh, packet here, I didn't realize, I knew it was a lot, but I didn't realize it was that many, you know.
We, we basically, there's five, five developments with roughly two hundred apartments saved. So there's roughly a thousand apartments now on the books with this approval tonight.
I'll just have to build them.
Uh, yeah, nobody's got a shovel on the ground yet. So, uh, I suppose the Marriott, the Marriott's the only one that does with the renovations that are ongoing, but.
Are they actually working on it?
They are, they are doing some work on it, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm biting my tongue. It's, it's all good. It's good.
Um, anything else? I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody's seeing something or has a question.
All right. So the final thing to do this evening is to approve their meeting minutes from March twenty-first. We need a motion in a second, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two Town Planning and Zoning, Zoning Commission Meeting.
Please stand for the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think there was, I heard everyone. All right, we're good. We're approved. So nine oh eight, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.